This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for August 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. If we could start by standing and saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Just a mini-announcement, just to say thanks to everybody who came out for Celebrate Southampton. I know Kami's put something out on Facebook thanking people, but especially everybody that attended, it was a glorious day, and thanks to all the vendors that came and the food trucks, as well as the artists that came, and I think we had a pretty good crowd. So, thanks for that. The next big celebration, I believe, is the Lions Club BBQ coming up. So be sure you find your tickets. If you don't know a Lions Club member, I believe they're selling them at East Hampton Bank, East Hampton Savings Bank.
Yes.
So please reach out and get your tickets before you miss that great BBQ dinner. All right? All right, do we have any citizens speak? Anybody here for open time for the public, or are you here for an agenda item?
Agenda item.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we could go out of order and take up the one-day wine and malt, which I believe is.
Ah, there we go, okay.
It's right now your last on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, all right, sure. Let's do that. We have a one-day wine and malt permit. Matt Tarleke from the abandoned brewery building. Sure, you want to just give us a minute and tell us a little bit what's going on?
Yeah, sure. So my name is Matt Tarleke, I'm the owner from abandoned building brewery in East Hampton. And, yes, yeah, exactly, right. The owners of Bishista Orchards reached out to us, they're going to be hosting a new event this year on September 14th where it's a concert they're hosting on their grounds. And they're going to be selling tickets in-person the day of the event. I think they're limiting them, then they said, to like, I think it's between 200 to 300 people. And then we are going to be bringing our, we have like a refrigerated box truck that we can serve draft beers out of, and they wanted us to come by and do beer and wine for the day. We've done a lot of events in East Hampton before too, so I think that's how they heard about us.
Great.
Yeah. And then, so I'll be there with at least one or two other staff, will be tip-certified, so we'll be doing IDs and wristbands on the day of the event too. That way everyone knows who's supposed to be drinking and who shouldn't be drinking.
There you go.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt beverage for abandoned building brewery on September 14th between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM on the Bishista Orchard grounds.
Second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Stephen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Scott, if you happen to have that.
I do.
The final signature, we can just pass it right away and sign it while Cindy, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you. I forgot. You know, I'm sorry, guys, I forgot. We need to do, out of what, we need to do a roll call because Cindy's remoting in. Sorry, sorry, Cindy.
Lumber, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Lavalley, aye.
Falls, aye. Cindy? She's frozen.
Palmer, aye.
There you go.
Okay, Palmer, aye. Okay, perfect. Okay, we did it right now. Sorry Cindy, I forgot about you remoting in there to do that way. Perfect, that way you can get it signed and do we make a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we'll get it back, yeah, or we can come back through and we'll get it to you. We'll just make copies for our files.
That sounds great.
Okay, perfect. All right, you asked that?
Sounds great.
Good, thank you. All right, perfect. Okay, let's move on to appointments and resignations. We have just one appointment before us tonight. Janet Kane, new appointment for the Senior Center Building Committee, a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2026. Janet's put in her request and the letter here, which I can just summarize very briefly. Most of us know she's been a longtime advocate for seniors in Southampton, she's been involved with the COA Board since 2017, has been a board chair for about seven years until her term expired. She's certainly been involved on the ad hoc senior feasibility, Senior Center Feasibility Committee, and then has been co-chair on the Senior Center Building Committee since January. So.
Second.
That's her request to join this committee again. All right, so we have a motion, I guess.
Did you make the motion, Chris?
Yeah, a motion.
Well, you read the whole thing, so I moved that we appoint, reappoint, no, new appointment.
New appointment, actually, yeah.
New appointment, new role, her new time. Janet Kane to the Senior Center Building Committee, a two-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And just a minute of discussion, I think I would just remind ourselves, we did a new charge for the Senior Center Building Committee, and we extended the membership from seven to nine people. I believe there was a concern that we might, or they might face some difficulties in recruiting people, so we wanted to make this effective, I think, as of October 1st to give them the chance to recruit new members. So this, the expiration date is still fine, but this will actually take effect on October 1st.
What's their quorum now?
The quorum now, well, right now, they've got seven members, so they would have their, at least four members right now, this would be the eighth member.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Lavalley, aye.
Cindy?
Palmer, aye.
Dan?
Lavalley, aye.
Falls, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Lumber, aye.
Okay, thank you, that's approved.
Now it's really done.
Okay. All right. Town administrators report.
Nothing written this week, just a few quick updates from some old business. The wifi is going to be installed September 6th. Unfortunately, we've missed them because Novus gets really busy during the school in the preparation, but they're going to be here on November 6th, I'm sorry, September 6th to install it and also to do a walk-around for police, fire, and library.
Is that going to be like a one-day thing to get it installed, or?
Yeah, should be all set. Should only be like an hour or two.
What's the walk-around for the police? Would it be for the other side?
They're going to evaluate to finish up the quote for bringing them under the shared services agreement.
Oh, great. Good, okay.
The audit for FY22 was submitted to the federal government. The Markham is coming in 9:16 to start the in-person part of the audit, they've set up the portal, we've been exchanging information. So FY23 will really kick off middle of next month, it was between September or October, so I said we'll do September to get it done as soon as possible, so.
Right.
Removing that.
Let's still plan on, I know they asked us to hold off on the letter of engagement, but I truly see no reason why to hold off on the FY24 request, so I'd like at the next meeting that we put that on the agenda to sign the letter of engagement for the FY24 audit.
Next meeting, I should have an update on the comp study. The data gathering is almost done, the only two places that we're waiting for is Munson and Hadley. Talked to Jen, they're Munson Town Administrator today, the Select Board has approved it, they're just waiting to send it to the union before they send it to us. And it looks like Hadley has theirs on the agenda for, I think they're tomorrow, Select Board's meeting for their comp plan. In the meantime, everything for the exempt employees, I've been working on and have some basic scoring and graphs ready to go. One of the things I wanted just, a meeting with Deb Bradway tomorrow morning, just go over potentially having her help with the, with the comp study, just have a neutral, independent person kind of go over the methodology and everything and to look at it. I'll probably have to ask the finance committee to dip into their funds a little bit to pay for that. But that should be ready for their, the next, at least the exempt employees should be ready for next week, next board meeting.
Great.
To at least do the draft and go over some of the basics, and then, I wouldn't adopt at that meeting, it would still need a little bit of fine-tuning.
More discussion, yeah.
At least the findings will be presented then.
Right. And you've had a chance to talk to the Collins Center folks?
I did, and we're having ongoing conversations.
So we haven't paid the bill yet, per se?
No.
Okay. Good.
Also, next meeting, I just want to start working on the budget cycle and budget calendar, getting that ready. There will be some differences this year, I think, I just wanted to at least sit down with everybody and start planning that out. A meeting with the finance team Thursday, that's going to be one of the topics, is to start sketching that out, so.
Okay.
And the Green Community Grant, that's all set, everything's been approved, it seems like I'm approving it multiple times, every day I get another contract to approve. But the Energy Resources is all set, they're being set up as a vendor now, so we got there at W9, and they're just sending us an invoice for the first deposit. Once we get that, they can schedule a date for installation. So that should only take a month or two.
And are they going to, do we know what building they're going to start with, or?
I'm going to request library.
Okay.
Joanna had asked to be moved up because of her grant, so she can figure out what to do with that next.
Right.
And then, once that's done, then, I was talking to Chris Mason from the state, so it's a 25, 50, 25% reimbursement. So it's just in stages, but it's going to be a very quick project, so quarterly reports and all that stuff should be, really shouldn't have to.
And I guess I'm going to assume, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, library's fine, but then would our second one probably, I know it's more involved than just changing light bulbs, but would the school be the next one because of the HVAC stuff, or?
That'll probably be on a separate track.
Oh.
So yeah, the light bulbs are for the, well, the lighting would be library, town hall, and police.
Okay.
I don't know much about the controller for Norris, just a little bit, so I'd have to double-check with that.
But the lighting shouldn't take?
No, I don't think it should take that long.
Much time, I would think, right?
No, there's a few areas that might be a little bit of an issue, I'm talking to Joanna, she might be having some electrical difficulties in some, like the ceiling lights, but we'll wait and see how that happens, so.
Good, well, that would be great to get the, finally, that poor thing has been around for a long, long time, I will be more than thrilled to get that completed and actually installed, so that's great.
For Zero College, I met with Katie, our attorney from KP Law. Surprisingly, it's easier to do a closing on municipal, on a 2.2 million, 52-acre municipal property than it is on our home.
All right.
Believe it or not. So the title, title report came in and everything was positive there, the wetlands delineation. We're aiming, we have reached out to the attorney to see if we can aim for September 16th, the week of September 16th to close, if possible. The only issue is the Select Board will have to vote, once the deed is prepared, on the deed acceptance, so they'll have to, they'll have to vote on probably September 3rd. So we're waiting for the other attorney to finalize that to Katie, then I can present that to you.
Okay.
And then, after that, the borrowing, or the money will be transferred from the treasure to an escrow and for KP Law, and then they'll take it from there, essentially.
Okay, sounds like we're moving forward.
Yep.
Pieces are coming together, all right, very good.
And the ATA recruitment, we did send out an offer letter, unfortunately, it went to the junk mail of the candidate, so we called him up and he did see it, so we're hoping for a response very soon.
Okay. So hopefully we'll have that for the next meeting as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And you said Lucy had already interviewed or was interviewing for the town clerk assistant as well?
Yes.
Good. Good, well, hopefully that will get us moving on some of these things, okay? Anything else on town administration? I know some of these are going to be on the agenda, so we'll come on, some of them may be a little bit repetitive here, but that's good.
Lot of stuff not ready quite for public, like riding around Zero College Highway, so we're working on that, so.
Yeah, okay. Great. All right, about some Select Board reports. Dan, anything for you?
Yeah, I mean, the Conservation Commission met last night, business as usual, a couple things. I think, one thing that I find interesting or great to mention is the Trailblazers have really stepped up and they're becoming a good group of volunteers in town to maintain the conservation areas in our town, and I think that they deserve thanks for that. And that's really everything about the CONCOM to mention. We all had that joint meeting with the Housing Authority and the Planning Board, so you guys know about that one. And the Tech Committee hasn't met since last time, since our last meeting, so.
Okay. Good, all right. Cindy, I'm going to call you in if I can do that.
I know the wifi is unstable on here, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Hearing you right now, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I really want to just add one tiny thing to what Dan just said about the Trailblazers, and that's that there is a Gmail email address for anyone who's listening who might like to be a volunteer participating with the Trailblazers, and it's so easy. T-R-A-I-L-S-01073@gmail.com for anyone listening. Thank you for mentioning that, Dan. The Open Space Committee has not met since the last report I gave, we will meet again first week in September. The Board of Assessors has just been doing business as usual, and there's nothing special to report. However, an individual we hoped might consider becoming the person to fill our open seat has informed me that this is not the right time for her to do that. So we're still looking for someone who would like to consider maybe attending a Board of Assessors meeting and learning more about it, and we do need a third member of the Board of Assessors, or anyone who knows of someone who might either be approached by me or just wants to contact the municipal assessor in the town office, just, it's really a critical role. And the third is the Board of Health, they have not met since my last report, however, I want to give a follow-up report. An individual came before the Select Board, I think, two or three meetings ago, he lived on County Road. I have attempted to email him twice to keep him informed about, you know, the schedule for Board of Health meetings. I have not had a return, I read his email address as he wrote it, and so if that person is listening, we advised him to contact the Board of Health, and I wish to be certain that I'm sending it to the right email address, so just know that I have not forgotten my role to encourage him to attend a Board of Health meeting. Thank you.
We might be able to check that out too with, maybe Judy could make a phone call or something just to follow up with him, Cindy, and just, you know, I'm sure we can find a number for him somewhere, just to check on that.
Well, I can work on that too, yeah.
And then, my other plug maybe for the Board of Assessors, just to say that anybody who thinks that that may be a daunting assignment to volunteer for, one of the things about that committee is that there is some online training, there are courses that you can follow to understand, you know, some of the responsibilities and some of the jargon and all the things that you're able to put forward as the Board of Assessors and your responsibilities, so don't be too scared off, there is some support in terms of learning that role, which is a very important role in town. As with CONCOM, I think we're going to be looking, we still have a vacancy, I believe, on CONCOM, I think we have still one vacancy anyway, and so again, they're, both committees have got online trainings that can help you get adjusted to that volunteer role, so please give it some serious thought. So thank you, Cindy. Stephen?
Dan mentioned, we'll circle back to discuss 117 to 125 College Highway and the joint meeting and planning related to that. That was Planning Board, my role there. Open Space is going to meet next couple of weeks, Cindy reported. Greenways has not met, and Housing Authority, I don't know whether I'm liaison or whether I'm just glom on, but.
Dan is.
I will.
Dan is a member.
Full-on member, okay. So I'll be meeting with them and coaxing them along and understanding what our current zone allows for at that property.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think I've noticed a Greenway meeting, but I'm sure that they'll be having one.
Thought it was on the agenda for early September.
Okay, could very well be, yeah. A lot of folks, I think, you know, just didn't do too much during August with people on vacation and so forth, so I'm hoping that'll be the case, and probably Parks is the same.
I'm not making up any reports.
Yeah, no, that's fine. John?
First, as relates to Hampshire Regional High School, just a reminder that the Select Board has two open seats that we need to fill. The elementary is full, board-wise. There is a special local school committee meeting this Friday at 12:30 to walk the building. I would encourage Select Board members and Finance Committee members that can attend to attend. The purpose of the walk-through is to build an awareness so that you may properly advocate to the MSBA for funds to rehab the school before it gets to a situation where it has to be a complete knockdown.
What time is it, John?
12:30. Should be about an hour, Friday.
12:30 Friday?
Yeah, and Tom, the head of maintenance, is going to walk us through there and point out from his point of view, concerns on that, that are there.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that's Norris, not the region.
Correct, yeah, it's the local elementary school. And that's all I have from the past two weeks.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, not too much news on my end either, actually. We've had, let's see, there's meetings for both Public Safety and Senior Center are scheduled a few weeks out. We're waiting on some information back from the architect on the Public Safety Building Committee before we schedule another meeting, and I think the Senior Center Committee is meeting around the middle of September. At this point in time, the Grant Committee is trying to get a meeting together probably for the week right after Labor Day, if not earlier, and we're looking for other members. We have one interested person to join us on the Grant Committee, but if there's anybody else, please reach out, let me know. We have not yet heard anything back on the Assistant to Firefighters Grant, every Friday is when they roll things out, and I don't know how long they keep rolling them out, but we have not seen our name appear on that list. And again, it's nationwide, so we're in a highly competitive grant process. The Cost efficiencies Committee has met last week and will be meeting again on September 4th, and we're taking a stab at looking at sort of a long-range capital improvement planning exercise. We've got a list of the assets in town from our town accountant, and we're going to be looking at how we can look at better planning and scheduling for the long-term, so that when things come up at town meeting, we know that X, Y, and Z are going to be on the town meeting warrant, it won't be a surprise to anybody, and we will have thought ahead about how we might want to do any financing for that, so that we're just trying to do some long-range planning. And so the capital improvement planning, right now, Cost Efficiency is taking a stab at leading that exercise, okay?
That's really good news.
Yeah, we have, we've been a little short-sighted, I think, in terms of long-term planning in town, and so this is an attempt, I think, to try and see if we can carry this out a little bit better.
Well, we're looking at, we've already committed to an investment in land, and to make the intended use of it, there will be a lot more.
Oh yeah, no, this, I mean, land is, land is one thing, I'm talking about all the equipment, all the vehicles, everything we own in town too, so, and a lot of those come up, you know, like.
I'm supporting that so that we know where we're starting from.
Exactly.
That's really critical.
No, it really is.
Because we could charge ahead with a bright shiny object and forget about.
Correct, no.
Darning our socks, or whatever.
Yeah, no, quite true. Yeah, so we've got lots of things to take a look at there, but I think.
I'm with you.
With John's help, we're going to pull that together.
I'm on their side.
So we're going to pull that together. The Bylaws Committee is actually meeting tomorrow, and again, we could use another member, but we're going to be taking a look at two things, in particular, the swimming pool bylaw has needed revision, and we've been in touch with the building commissioner to get that updated, and so we'll be looking at that language to make sure that that's the most recent language that he's satisfied with before we bring it to Select Board, and then we're looking at the use of town hall or public buildings in general by outside organizations. So we'll be looking at those as our couple of bylaws, and we're going to be taking a look too at the existing Capital Improvement Committee bylaw, just to see if that needs some adjustment based on DLS recommendations for doing such things, so. We've got some work on our agenda anyway, so, but always glad to have another member if anybody wants to come and do some research and just, you know, we're basically more writing and editing than we are anything else in terms of official bylaw people, but we do our best. Okay, I think that's it for reports, let's jump into new business, and I guess, two things that we haven't talked about so far, let's go with Scott and the appointment of the Council on Aging Director. You want to fill us in, what's going on there, please?
So a quick history, around mid-July, the town and the previous director had separated employment. We had asked Deb Bradway, who is a former HR Director and Town Administrator, to come in to kind of make, continue the operations. Unfortunately, personal issue will make Deb's last day tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
So unfortunately, I think she's worked out pretty well, but during that time, we have posted the position. Initially, I thought maybe doing a search committee, but it was, brought to my attention that there may be an internal candidate that could fill the role as Director. And then with the PQB, you know, there may be times in which a position may be filled through a promotion of an imminently qualified current employee, or in which the Select Board determines that in the best interest of the town, an internal posting is preferable. We did do a quick, because Deb is leaving on tomorrow, we wanted to see if the internal candidate was a viable option, we put together a quick committee consisting of myself, Stephen, Dana Laturi, who's a new member, Francine Tishman, who's a former Select Board member, Ted Palmer, who is the current COA Board Chair.
Chair.
And Janet Kane, who is the former Board Chair and, I guess, current nominee to the Building Committee, Senior Building Committee. We had an interview with Kate DeSanto today, went very well. The Committee overwhelmingly supported moving forward with an internal candidate to present to the Select Board. At this point, I would request the appointment of Kate DeSanto as an emergency hire for two weeks, and at the same time, move forward with the due process of appointing her as the permanent.
So moved.
Okay. I hear a second from Cindy, okay?
Johnson, second.
But let's have discussion first.
Well, no, usually you get a motion and a second, and then you discuss, I think. But anyway, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not in Parliament.
No, discussion, yes, I was going to open it for discussion, John had his hand up, so.
Do we have, do we have the emergency PARF? My question is, if, and if we don't have it, it's just, where's it fallen on the compensation? Is it what the last one was?
It will, this was literally, you know, just an hour ago, so I haven't had time to fill it out or have Bradley do that, so, but I would want to go before the PQB and then the Select Board again to finalize, but I don't think the rate would be more than what the previous director had.
The previous full-time director, not the temporary one?
Previous full-time director, not the current interim.
Not the temporary. Because remember, the temporary one?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, no, right, it wouldn't be at the interim level, no.
All right, so I would, to the maker of the motion, if you would allow a friendly amendment to your motion that the hourly rate not exceed that of the previously full-time-employed COA Director, I would like that in the motion.
I will amend my motion to say I support the hire, temporary hire, as well as then move to the permanent hire after PQB agrees to that, and it, the rate would not exceed that which was being paid to the former regular Director, not the interim Director.
Okay, that's motion, second please?
For the emergency one, yeah, yeah.
Second again? Yeah?
Are you okay with a second?
Do you second? Okay, all right, all right, then. Any further discussion? If not, yes.
Yeah, I feel a little funny about setting an emergency salary for this employee when we had the intention of bringing them on full-time. Some ways, I feel like that sets the expectation for what their salary would be when they're brought in for the full-time position. I kind of, I think it would, if we had the time, I think it would be better for us to determine where this person would relatively fall on the salary range for this emergency period, instead of setting something.
Just to, just to note that, Dan, I didn't say, I said not to exceed.
Yeah.
Not, I didn't set the range, the rate.
I hear you.
And I guess my, the reason why I brought it up is I just, I would, because we're only dealing with a two-week period, and the position goes vacant at the end of the day tomorrow, right? So that's, there's your emergency. So as long as it's not gonna exceed what we had already built into our budget, I'm good. I'm open to the permanent one if there warrants a discussion that it should be higher or lower, whatever the case may be, for the proper paperwork to get before us to consider. That's all.
Okay, does that resolve your...
You know, I'm not gonna feel 100% comfortable with it, but I understand we're not in the best situation to have the time to work it all out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, having said that, okay, all those in favor, roll call, please. Cindy?
Ah, yes.
Dan?
I, Lavalley.
Falls Eye.
Johnson Eye.
Lumbra Eye.
Okay, motion's approved, thank you. All right, next we have something that's a little unusual, something called a subordination agreement.
Mortgage subordination.
Yeah, that's mortgage subordination, so I find it a little bit odd, but go ahead.
Right, so this is a little bit of a unique situation. We received an email last month from a constituent that is refinancing their home and through Bank ESB, and Bank ESB is asking them to make the current mortgage, which was given in 2010 through a community development block grant through Southampton for some, I don't quite understand how it was done, but I guess it's because of the size of Southampton in relation to where this person lives, and that, I guess, had to go through us to be administered through the Pioneer Valley Planning Committee. So it was a loan for about $30,000 to be paid off over 15 years. Currently, they're almost paid off, there's about $1,600 outstanding on the mortgage. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is okay with the subordination as long as the Select Board approves it. There's enough equity in the home to cover it if something did happen. One thing is, you know, since the person's refinancing, what it would do is essentially, we would have first priority as, I guess, the lien holder or holding the mortgage, if they didn't pay to go after the mortgage. And what this would basically say, East Hampton Savings Bank would be above us and have priority if they defaulted on their mortgage. So generally, banks will wanna be the first in line to get the money, rather than this, and it's only $1,600 right about now. If it was more, I would say that, you know, it'd be a little bit more at risk, but I think that we're safe to be subordinate to ESB.
And just for the record, this person actually lives on Southampton Road in Montgomery, so literally next door, but somehow the, the whole grant process was administered through the town of Southampton, back then.
Yes, for our CBT, which I have no idea how we...
It was a collaborative.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the subordination agreement for 1612 Southampton Road, Montgomery, Mass., recorded in the Registry of Deeds Book 19054, page 387, and to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign on our behalf.
Okay, motion by John, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Stephen, any discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor, roll call, please. Cindy?
Palmer, yes.
Lavalley, aye.
Falls Eye.
Johnson Eye.
Lumbra Eye.
Okay, that's approved, thank you. All right. Classification Compensation Plan, I think, Scott, you kinda covered that, but if anybody has any questions about that for Scott, thanks for trying to gather the data. It sounded like you had about a dozen or so communities that were responsive to your email request for data in terms of their compensation schedules, et cetera.
Yeah, all, all except for one community responded. Some communities' data is better than others.
Yeah.
So I'm, once we have Munson and Hadley's, we'll have a good basis for...
And did we get Granby?
We did, yes. Yeah, we did.
Okay, then, that answers our earlier question as to why wasn't it part of the original report. Okay, good, all right, well, we'll be looking forward to whatever you can pull together, at least for the next round of discussion. And you might wanna determine whether you wanna do that with Select Board first or a joint with Select Board and Finance, I don't know. I'm not sure when Finance is meeting next, John, do you know, offhand?
I don't.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, we can, we can talk about that, but if we can at least have it for, for our next meeting, but maybe somebody from Finance would at least join in, even if it wasn't a full joint meeting, they might wanna hop in at the same time. I'm just gonna take a quick look and see if I see, oh, I see them on August 22nd, actually, which is this week. So I won't be ready for then, I'm sure, right? So that's, Finance Committee is meeting apparently at 6:30 on the 22nd. Okay. All right. Any other business that can't wait until the next regular September 3rd Select Board meeting? And I will just bring up, yeah, go ahead, John.
I just have a, I have a question, and if there's no answer tonight, that's okay, but two weeks ago, we received notice of concerns from the Massachusetts Teachers Retirement System, and I'm wondering if there's been any update on the compliance with that, especially since we're, the School Committee will be meeting on Friday, and we also have impact bargaining negotiations coming up. So if, if there's an update, great, if not, if, maybe I could get one just by email before Friday?
Yeah, I talked to the Treasurer about it last week, and I'll see where the progress is.
Okay.
So if you could get something in writing to John, so that they can have it for the School Committee, that would be great. Yeah, good point, John, thank you on that. So we do have, our next regular scheduled meeting would be September 3rd, that is Primary Election Day. We don't oftentimes meet on an election day, but we are told that there is no reason that we could not. If it were the national presidential election, I would not recommend that, but I think if everybody's okay, rather than throwing us off schedule, we could meet our usual time from 6:00 to 8:00. The polls are open, by the way, for that day of voting, and there's obviously early, early voting coming up. Lucy is, if she hasn't already, she'll be putting something out on the website. There's mail-in ballots that have been going out. I think, Scott, you said there was maybe about 1,200 mail-in ballots that have gone out to people that have requested them, but we'll, the polls, I believe, are open from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the, 8:00 in the evening, so I think we will keep, unless anybody's really objection, objecting to the September 3rd meeting. If we can't do it here, at worst comes, we'll, we'll meet upstairs. The only thing that would mean is that we wouldn't be live-recorded, it would be recorded, but just not live. So we'll, Scott and I will work that out and see what makes the most sense, given the agenda that we'll have, but if everybody's okay, we'll keep on with September 3rd. Not hearing any, any negative, yeah?
I vote yes for the 3rd, and then two weeks out, the 17th, when I will be absent. Do I understand, just as a passing point, that the upstairs meeting room does not have the ability to live broadcast?
It does not live broadcast, it's recorded. And they come and pick up the card probably every week and post it up. So any, any meetings that have happened up there that people record, East Hampton Media comes and picks up the video card?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, old business, anything under all that capital asset planning we've talked about a little bit? Have not made any progress on the surplus disposal, surplus equipment. I do have it on my list, and we'll find out what we have to do for that with, with Scott's help and Judy's. We've done all that inventory, so it'd be great to get it out of the way. We're just tripping over it all over the place downstairs. Just, Scott, you've given us the updates already on the 23 audit and the green energy, so let's, are we anymore on college highway land acquisition? No, okay. Now, I'm sure that there's some other discussion you wanna bring up, maybe on the land use planner, or no?
Well, following the joint meeting, I sent out to everybody that I could find on the town website, all potentially interested stakeholders are invited to participate in a structured first draft of what is your interest in specific in the new to-be-acquired property. And so it's a blank form in Word, and I'm hoping that each of the stakeholders, primarily committees, boards, and authorities, could complete and return their very preliminary, whatever-you-got draft by September 15th. And then I'd be able to, with Scott's backup, fold that into something we could review at the first meeting in October, given that I'll be absent on the 17th. So that invitation is to any interested stakeholder. And if you think one that maybe wasn't on the distribution list, please forward the entire email with both attachments. The second attachment is the form filled out. My best effort, my effort to give you an example, even if some of the data is far off, and I use the Open Space Committee, Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission interests that I see in the wetland parcel that's adjacent to the Greenway. So I just wanna say, it's only a first draft, it's a structured way to share whatever information you've got. Obviously, the Public Safety Committee and Senior Center have much more information, and this is not to diminish or filter anything. We want all of that public engagement, that deep thinking, and they're really first at the table with first claim to the property, but then there's a lot left over, and we wanna be able to see what there, what opportunities there may be for synergy among the several uses. Ones that are very active, but earlier in formation, or housing, parks, and perhaps other, other interests as well.
And I think the main, main thing, just to, you know, reemphasize, and you've, you've said it to me, is that this is just a preliminary work that would help jumpstart some work with an actual land use planner that we're in the process of, of looking at. I know you and Stephen have had, John, sorry, Scott and Stephen have had discussions about that. Show your hand.
Right, so I drafted a draft scope for both.
Just fine. Okay, and so, yeah, so we've, yeah, we've got a draft scope, and then I know you've, you've started to flesh that out, and we'll, we'll see what the next steps are to, to go forward and identify somebody. Cindy, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Got a question. I know I've been away for the week, last week and a half, but Stephen, at the last meeting, as well as at the meeting where all the, you know, the kickoff meeting, the Planning Board chaired last week, or week before last, there was discussion about having sort of guided tours for people who'd never gone on any tours of the land.
Other tours, is that what you're asking, Cindy? You're kinda breaking up a little bit?
Well, yeah.
Talk tour?
Yes, tours, and I think Stephen was gonna try to pick up some dates, so this is just a reminder that I'm very interested. I will be home on Saturday.
College Highway. I must pay Chris and Cindy to tee this up. Among my conversations with potentially interested parties, I spoke with George Holmes, our conservation agent.
George Russell. George Russell? You said George Holmes, so, just his last name?
The conservation agent.
George Russell.
George Russell. George Russell, thank you. Different agent than I knew long ago. George Russell is interested in a tour of the property, and we've agreed on Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, and if any other interested party is interested, you're welcome to contact me and join us at that time, or contact me for a different time.
Okay, thanks very much.
But plan for an hour and a half, that's how long George and I, so he gets back for the staff meeting, and because there are virtually no trails on the property, you will be heavily exposed to poison ivy and ticks. And that's all manageable, as long as you anticipate that and plan your decontamination afterwards. But I'm enthusiastic about showing more people the property, and it's, it's not a sales job, it's an introduction to the physical reality of the property.
I will, I will not be in town until this coming weekend, so Stephen, if you could set another date, maybe for the following week, if that's convenient, I would be very interested.
I'd be happy to. Send me two times the work for you, and then I'll try and publicize it beyond just two of us. Thanks.
Okay, very good.
Just because it's highly likely that I will not be here on September 17th.
For the?
September 17th.
For the 17th, okay.
Yeah, 16th to the 18th, I'm away for work. I mean, I potentially could force myself to drive back, but it's highly unlikely that I will, so it'd just be three of you.
Got it, all right. Thanks for that. All right, anything else we're looking at?
Question back to the CONCOM. At an earlier Select Board meeting, we appreciated that the wetlands delineation was complete, and it looked like they're very limited wetland areas on the development parcels. I asked whether, and I'll ask again, it would be useful to turn the delineation into a ANRAD, limited, to memorialize that delineation for reliance by anyone over the next, however long it's effective, three years or so. And so the question is, town's not yet the owner. If the town is the owner, who's the applicant on this? Does the town ask the town for the ANRAD? But I would like to tee it up, because then we have not only a delineation, but an agreement what the regulatory boundaries are, and that will come into play as we look at housing or stormwater management for the property in any regard.
I would assume that it would be the town that would apply to the CONCOM for the ANRAD. I mean, we've had, I know Ed used to...
It puts you on both sides of the...
Yeah, so, but I think, as a town administrator, I think Ed had done that and a couple of other, other things that we've done in the past, I think, you know, presented before.
So it can be done, but my point is, please, let's do it. I'm sure there's a filing fee, unless you can also finesse that. Nice, all right, so let's get that done. They are, they are small in extent, but they are there, and I'm certain that we're gonna have to take account of that with Greenway access and with stormwater.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good, all right. Okay, that's basically what we have for business. We've already dealt with the licenses and permits, so we have, Stephen, if you would read off the warrants, please.
Creative reading exercise, it's a long list. Most of them are pending, all right, bear with me. Warrant 20, W-24-46B, a Treasury warrant in the amount of $576.06 and 6 cents. A Treasury warrant, P-24-55, in the amount of $35,198.21. Then all the following warrants are pending approval. PD-25-2, the amount of $56,864.65. PD-25-2A, in the amount of $236,141.37. P-25-2, in the amount of $302,816.56. W-25-3A, the amount is $7,891.44. P-25-4, the amount is $308,137.75. PD-25-4, the amount is $50,969.09. W-25-5, the amount is $246,792.07.
Okay, so...
If it's not continued on the next page, I rest my case.
The question I guess I would have is why we don't usually, and I'm assuming it's something related to Vadar, we don't usually have pending warrants, so why haven't things like payroll from fiscal '25 number two, for example, why wouldn't that have already been approved?
I would, I could take an educated guess and say, because we haven't closed out the previous year and loaded the budget for this fiscal year yet, because we're posting in April.
So we haven't loaded the budget for this fiscal year? How can, is that possible, really? How do we pay our bills, then, if we, I mean, how long can these be pending? I mean, we've got vendors and people that are waiting.
Well, I think the checks are going out. It's just in the system, it's pending.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, it's a little different than what we usually see, so that's what I'm, you know, at some point, it might be good just to give us a five-minute tutorial in Vadar in terms of what we can expect, I think, and, you know, if there are other reports, you know, as you're fine-tuning things, what kind of financial reports we can see to, to help us kind of maintain our oversight role of the budget and the status of where things are. I think that's important, but it's unusual to have so many warrants pending without that, so, okay.
There are some implementation wrinkles.
Yeah.
And that's a management-level issue, but at the simple level of uploading data, it is continuing to be a learning experience.
Yeah, okay.
And in particular, it hit with schools, and Hoovering up the schools... And in particular, it hit with schools, and hoovering up the schools' reports into master town books.
Okay.
So they're working hard at it, and I hope they're still keeping a sense of humor.
Okay, all right.
They look a little less happy today.
Very good.
Are we taking up the minutes, or did you wanna hold off?
All right, the minutes, actually, I'm gonna ask if we hold off. I, we just got them this afternoon, and actually, there's a couple of things that are very unclear in a couple spots, so I've asked Scott if we can hold off on the minutes until our next meeting, so the minutes of July 23, we will not approve tonight. And other than that, we have a select board meeting September 3rd, as usual?
I move that we adjourn the select board at 6:49 PM.
All right.
Second.
Second by Stephen. All those in favor, roll call, please. Cindy?
Hommer, yes.
LaValle, aye.
Falls aye?
Lumbra, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right, we will call ourselves adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks, Cindy, for joining in. We'll catch you in person next week, I hope.